Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, January 24th, 2024 at 6:30 PM. This is a hybrid meeting via Zoom and in person at Old Town Hall, 1111 Somerset Avenue. The Zoom meeting information, the meeting ID number is 821-2453-5263, and the passcode is 934988. The phone number to call in is 1305-224-1968. Public input may be provided using the following methods. Contact our office at boardofselectmen-dighton-ma.gov to provide input prior to the meeting, via zoom/call, and by phone at 305-224-1968. And we are continually played on Dighton Channel 9 and at YouTube at youtube.com/townofdighton. This meeting is being recorded. The listing of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Now, all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. Please like to have a call of order?
Good evening. Leonard Hull is present.
Nicole Mello, present.
And my name is Peter Cameron, I'm present as well. Can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And right after that, can you stay standing, please, because we're going to have a moment of silence for some of our neighbors that we lost this week.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since our last meeting, two members of the Dighton community have passed. Our thoughts and condolences go out to their families. Janice M. Terry, 86, passed away on January 12th. She was the loving wife of Charles P. Terry for over 63 years. Mrs. Terry was well-known for the time she devoted to the Dighton Rehoboth Regional School Committee. Janice spent over 30 years advocating for special needs students in the district. And also Elizabeth Betty Torres of North Dighton died at age 96 on January 13th at Walton Hospital. She was the daughter of the late Milton and Catherine Sherman of North Dighton. She is survived by her two children, Stephen Torres of North Dighton and Cynthia M. Torres of Waterboro, Maine.
All right, we're going to get right into our agenda. First thing is a poll hearing petition 30818170. Install one jointly owned poll on Main Street. Install a mid-span poll, 50-25 between poll 50 and 51, for a single-phase transformer at 654 Main Street, Dighton.
Yes, second, we do have a representative from National Grid, Aaron Lee with us. I'm on Zoom. Hello, Aaron.
Hi, Aaron.
Hey, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, great. Right, so yeah, pretty self-explanatory. We're looking to add this jointly owned poll in between, directly in between polls 50 and 51, Main Street. This poll is strictly just for system improvement on our end, it's for monitoring our feed through current voltage sensors, so that's pretty much it, sum it up.
Yeah, it's pretty easy, straightforward. I don't see any main issues. Mr. Hull, do you have any questions?
Just one question in regards to the poll, how far apart will they be?
The existing span between polls 50 and 51 are about 120 feet between the two. This poll would be directly in between, I'd say about 60 feet.
Thank you very much.
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Here we know other questions. Is there anybody out here who wants to discuss the poll? Probably not. Okay, is there a motion on the floor to approve this?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to install one jointly owned poll on Main Street. Install a mid-span poll, poll 50-25 between poll 50 and 51, for a single-phase transformer at 654 Main Street, Dighton.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Cameron is an aye. Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Review, discuss, and act appointment of Ron O'Connor to the 250th Anniversary Committee. Hi, Ron. Sure you want to do this? Okay, it's the next few years of your life, 40 hours a week. I don't have any questions for Ron, he's a great gentleman, and I don't have any concerns at all, I think he'd do a great job on this committee. Leonard, do you have any questions?
No.
No, just to say, so far, I mean, this committee's, I mean, it's rounding out quite nice.
Yes.
You're going to be a great addition, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ron. Is there a motion on the floor to appoint Ron O'Connor?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ron O'Connor to the 250th Anniversary Committee.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Cameron is an aye. Thank you, Ron.
Thanks, Ron.
Review, discuss, and act appointment of Robin LaCroix to the 250th Anniversary Committee. Hi, Robin.
Hi.
Good, well, you already hit our spiel.
Yes.
I have no questions for Robin, I think, what's that?
Oh, you heard we liked him, you're going to jump on the Ron bandwagon? I like that.
Robin, I thank you that you want to do this.
She has no choice. Well, that's okay, my arm was twisted as well.
Ron, I mean, Leonard, do you have any questions?
No, I just would like to note that Robin has significant involvement in genealogy and with the Historical Society. She's certainly a worthy candidate for this position.
Oh, sure. Nicole, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, is there a motion on the floor to appoint Robin?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Robin LaCroix to the 250th Anniversary Committee.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Cameron is an aye. Thank you, Robin. I know it's exciting times. Review, discuss, and act a letter from Annabelle Powell regarding the resignation from Dighton Housing Authority Board. And I didn't get a copy of that letter, but that's okay. Is Annabelle here?
No. Do you need to read it?
To whom it may concern, please accept my resignation from the Dighton Housing Authority Board. A community member has come forth with the interest of serving on the Dighton Housing Board until a Lincoln Village resident applies. For further questions, please call Dighton Housing Authority Director Robin, Robbie DeSouza, at 508-823-836. Signed, Annabelle Powell. Thank you, Leonard.
Thank you.
I don't have any concerns, and I think Kathy is being appointed tonight. Hi, Kathy.
Hi.
So, is there a motion on the floor to accept Annabelle's letter of resignation?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept a letter of resignation of Annabelle Powell with sincere thanks and appreciation for her service to the Dighton Housing Authority Board.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Cameron is an aye. Review, discuss, and act appointment of Kathy Perry as a Dighton Housing Authority Board member. Hi, Kathy. You really want to do this, too?
I, yep.
That's great. No, it's very nice. Sometimes it's hard to find volunteers, and I think it's a great thing that you want to do this. But thank you. All right, Leonard, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Nicole, do you have any questions?
She's a nurse, so she has my vote.
Doesn't get any better than that. So, is there a motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Kathy Perry to the Dighton Housing Authority Board.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Cameron is an aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sharra Costa, you're up. This is a review, discuss, and act for mail-in voting for the calendar year of 2024.
Hello.
Aye.
Good evening. The question tonight is whether the Board of Selectmen wants to entertain opting out of vote by mail for the annual town election in calendar year 2024. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 54, Section 25B, A1, a town can only opt out of vote by mail for a local election after the city council or Board of Selectmen hold a public hearing and take a recorded vote to do so at least 45 days before the election. If the Board of Selectmen is interested in opting out of the vote by mail for the April 6th, 2024 annual town election, the Board must vote to hold a hearing and vote on the matter no later than February 14th, 2024. It is customary to provide a public hearing notice of at least two weeks. It is the recommendation of the Town Clerk's Office to offer vote by mail for our local town election in 2024, keeping in mind that we have four elections this year, where the state sent out notices, cards, to all registered voters in Massachusetts, where there is the option to select all elections this year. In order to avoid confusion to the voters, it would be in the town's interest to offer vote by mail. Vote by mail is important as it provides accessibility for voters who may face challenges in reaching polling places, such as disabilities, elderly, or does not have the means to get to these polling locations. It can also increase voter turnout by making the voting process more convenient. Vote by mail also does offer a secure and verifiable way for people to cast their ballots, contributing to the democratic process. Keep in mind, we have 2,000 voters that, if we have 2,000 voters that select all elections, it will cost $1,280 to send a letter that the town has decided not to offer vote by If we send the ballots to all 2,000 requesting all elections, it would cost $1,800, which is a $520 difference. Upfront cost, however, which is exciting, incurred for vote by mail for municipal elections that are held in FY '24, DLM will certify allowable expenses that mirror the early voting law. This includes ballot mailing and costs related to vote by mail supplies. DLM will use data from their Secretary of State's office to calculate postage expenses for ballots mailed for each election, and will certify a 92% ballot for elections this year. So, it is actually, we would pay the $1,800 upfront, but will be reimbursed by the state.
How much?
The cost of mailing the ballots.
Okay, thank you.
Is it 1,000 per election?
No, so, I'm just giving you a ballpark.
Okay.
If we had 2,000 voters
Yep.
that choose all elections, then it would cost $1,800. Obviously, it would be less if we had less voters that request vote by mail
Sure.
for all elections.
Okay.
So, it is not mandatory that we send a letter if we do opt out, but it is recommended by the state to send a letter because it can be very confusing. And by sending that letter, which is $1,280 that it would cost us, we would not be reimbursed for that by the state. But if we do decide to do vote by mail, it would cost us upfront, but we would be able to get reimbursed.
Excuse me, couple things.
Mm-hmm.
We offer anybody who can't make it, an opportunity to vote correct by mail. They can request a ballot.
They can, yes.
So, why is that a benefit to offer it twice?
So, it's a benefit to, so, it's a benefit to do vote by mail because it's not just about the people that can't make it, it's about a lot of the people that can't make it because of disabilities, because they can't get there.
Right, I understand that's your argument.
Yeah.
But we're already offering that.
You are.
So, why are we doing it, why is your argument for pro this if it's something we already offer?
Okay, it can get extremely confusing if you, if the card comes out and they choose all elections. It's very confusing to the voter that chose all elections not to be able to get a ballot for the local election because to them, they are, they're requesting all elections, which includes local. So, it can get confusing, so they're going to be getting their primary, they're going to be getting their state, they're going to, but they won't be getting their local election.
Okay.
And it can be a little bit more confusing to the voter.
I just, my frustration is not with you, it's with the state. If they're telling us we have an option, but it really seems like we don't because they've made it now confusing for residents.
Correct.
And they're twisting our arm. That's where my frustration is.
Mr. Chairman, I have
Sure.
a couple of questions. First of all, Ms. Costa, your presentation and your defense of what you're advocating for is excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. First question is, is this in your budget?
Yes.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, FinCom and the Board of Selectmen approved your budget earlier in the year, is that correct?
Correct. It is in our election budget.
Thank you. And my next question is to the Board, actually. If this evening we vote to opt in, we don't need to have a meeting, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Considering the subject, we're going to open it up to questions for anybody who's here that wants to be heard on this, as opposed to waiting to have public input. Is there anybody that wants to be heard before we continue? Yes, Nancy.
Yes.
Nancy's first, sorry. Just keep it to under five minutes, Nancy, please.
Only if you insist.
Okay.
I'm one of the people, Nancy Gulat, 631 Great Terrace, North Dighton. I'm one of the people that put the X in the box, all elections. It just makes sense to me. From a financial standpoint, if you allow this to go forward, it's not going to cost us money in the end. When I got the card, I was confused and wasn't sure how this is going to work. But I also thought about the people in town who would take advantage of vote by mail and the fact that there are four elections. I think it's that important. It's not a burden on the town. Initially, the money's going to be up fronted, she's going to pay the bill to, if she has to, to do the letters. The fact that there's a reimbursement, that cushions the state sending that out because the minute I got the card, even though I Xed all elections, I realized what the problems would be. So, I'm glad that there's some money attached, but by the same token, I think it's that important that we reach out. This came up before, I supported it the last time, it was the only, it was a local election, as I remember, and the, it was, the Board did not approve it. I'm one of the people that got an absentee ballot. But in all honesty, absentee ballots should be a really, really good reason, other than I just can't get there, all right? Anything we can do to encourage more people to vote, I think is very important. And this particular one, with four elections, I think it's important, and I think that the Board should consider saying, okay, let's do it. If you opt out, I don't think you can really opt out tonight because I understand we're going to have a public hearing, which can be part of a regular agenda, I realize that. I think this is that important, especially when we have a national election coming up. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy.
Nancy.
Yes, sir, would you like to be heard?
Sure. David Carr, 1595 Williams Street.
How are you, David?
I'm good, thank you.
Good. Haven't seen you in a while.
No, not for a while. I enjoyed the Finance Committee for the brief period I served. So, I'm just here to advocate for it because, quite honestly, anything that makes it easier for the citizens in this town to vote is a good thing, and I think we should be advocating for more participation. You know, when you go to a town meeting and you only see, you know, maybe 200 people, tops, if you're lucky, and I don't think we've hit that mark in a long, long time. I think we should be making it easier for voters to participate in the process. And from what I saw from the last special town meeting where this august Board was actually advocating to not only give back 250,000, but they wanted to add another 100,000 on top of it, I think that the town could actually support the budget to do this. I think rather than making people call up and request an absentee ballot, it should just be, it should just be a normal part of the voting process. And I would like to, I would like to see that happen, I think that could only be good for this town and good for the voters. We have a lot of people that are aged now, and as well as a lot of younger people moving into town with families, and it's sometimes difficult to, you know, it's not something where you may not want to grab four kids and come down and vote. You know, it's kind of like herding cats in some respects. Anybody who's had young kids for any length of time will understand exactly what I'm saying. So, I think it would be a good thing for the people in this town to be able to vote by mail, and I think it should just be part of the natural process of voting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else who wants to come up? Yes, Mark.
So, Mark Pacheco, 2530 Maple Swamp. So, last year, when vote by mail came before the Selectmen, I think it was really for transparency. It was the, the law was written after our budget was approved by the taxpayers, so it was a natural question to ask the taxpayers, is this something that we want to do? That's not the case for this fiscal year, though the law has been written, we know what's expected of us. It was put in the Town Clerk's budget, and it was approved by the taxpayers at town meetings, so it didn't come up at town meeting that there was an issue. I haven't heard an issue at a Selectmen's meeting to put it on the agenda, so I'm just hoping as a resident, moving forward, just for transparency, I'd like to see how this makes it on the agenda, if a resident comes and requests it, or someone on the Board asks for this, but I just would hate for this to come up every single year because I feel like the taxpayers have already spoken that they support vote by mail by appropriating it and voting it in the last budget of this year. And I just want to echo, Sharra had a really good point that last year, the auditors office would not reimburse the towns for these expenses, but this year they will. Other towns petitioned for the auditors to pay for this, what we consider a state mandate, and they are now, so not only do we appropriate the money that we have to pay it upfront, the state's going to reimburse us, so. And back to the confusing part, the postcards, you have so many options to choose, and it's no excuse vote by mail. So, I think our voters would be so confused and disenfranchised at some level if they filled out the card and then got a ballot for three elections and not the fourth, if they're not following local politics, which... So, yeah, those are my thoughts, and I hope we consider not putting this on the agenda every year if it's appropriated at town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it is voted every year, correct?
It has to.
It, like, it only has to be voted every year, like, if, oh, yeah, like, if anyone ha, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like, if anyone has an interest in opting, like, opting out.
Oh, okay.
So, when you say anyone, any town resident?
Yeah, like, oh, yeah, like, I'm, 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 like, I'm, sorry, like, any member of the Board.
Okay. All right, no, thank you.
Okay, does anybody else want to be heard? Okay, Sharra, I think all your comments are great, and we'll take it from here.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Coppins, did you give your street address?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's 1595 Williams Street, Dighton.
As I look at the agenda for this evening, it says, "Review, discuss, and act." And I agree, Mr. Pacheco. And at this time, I would like to make a motion that we accept to opt in for mail-in voting for calendar year 2024.
Can I second that from the floor?
No.
Is there a second?
Can I second that with a comment?
Sure.
So, I'm going to second that. I don't agree with it, with mail-in for this, but the fact that I'm not going to have Dighton residents pay, it's not fair. It's not fair to them that this was put on the mailer from the state and that they would choose this. I know myself, I wouldn't know if I'm clicking all that it's not going to be one of the four. I think it was unfair that the state did that. If they're going to give us an option, give us an option. No, give us an option and then punish the residents, so I'm going to second it, but I'm not happy.
Okay. Mike, do we need to post this again for a public hearing, or is this sufficient?
The Board only has to, uh, post, uh, post, uh, post a hearing if it wants to opt out, like, if you want to, if you want to have the town in, then really you don't have to do anything at all.
Okay. So, then there's no reason to vote on it?
I agree.
Point of order, there is a motion on the floor. It has been made and seconded. It can be voted down.
And there's a motion on the floor, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter Cameron is an aye. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for folks that came out in regards to this.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Michael Heath, or Head?
Hi. Yes, Mike Head, and Dave Fox, Woodard and Curran, and Ralph Tellis.
Yep.
Here to talk about the project, the grant project that we initiated, like, actually at the end of December 22 with the Water District.
Yep.
Uh, to, like, uh, to explore opportunities where we can streamline a lot of, oh, yeah, like, operational, like, in financial processes, hopefully. So, Mike, do you want to give an overview of the, uh, the project and the scope of work that we would have happened between now and the end of June?
First of all, my name is Michael Head with Woodard and Curran, engineering consulting firm, with the name of Dave Fox from Ralph Tellis Financial Consultants. Been helping town and the Water District in kind of planning this for some time now. As Mike alluded, indicated, it's a, it's a fully funded, it's a grant for the evaluation to find efficiencies and opportunities for consolidation between the town and the Water Really, the evaluation has two phases. The first phase is high-level condition assessment and look at the, you know, the financial systems, the management systems, the operation systems, the organizational systems between the two entities, and try to find those efficiencies and try to find ways that those could be more simplified to reduce costs. But it also goes a little further and looks at the condition of the, like, an asset condition assessment of the actual physical assets with the Water District relative to the treatment processes, the pipes, pumps, all of that. And the goal of that condition assessment is really to identify the challenges that you may have, whether they're going to be, you know, aging equipment and aging unit treatment processes, whether there are going to be regulatory issues that would impact these processes. And, and again, kind of take a step back at that point and try to find those efficiencies. Do those challenges that we identify, do they kind of point towards consolidation effort, or are they such that... Or are they such that it does make sense to maintain the independence of the two systems, um, depending on how that looks? And the goal being to produce a report that has identified those challenges, evaluated several alternatives to get you through those challenges. And of course, with that, those will have some um, significant cost impacts to rates and, and fees and uh, capital outlay as well, which I will leave to Dave to um, to speak to on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Good uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Dave Fox. I'm a vice president with Raftellus, sub consultant to Woodard and Curran. Um, Woodard and Curran are engineers. They're great at the operational, the capital, the, the infrastructure side of things. Uh, my firm is focused predominantly on financial rate and customer impacts for municipalities and in the utility industry predominantly within water as well. So a project of this nature, as Mike just, um, just talked about, of thinking about fixing the different problems and whether that be a consolidation or whether that be maintaining su- two separate entities or some other governance structure. Um, projects of these nature always come down to just the dollars and cents of it. So we can come up with the, the most advantageous from an infrastructural standpoint or an operational standpoint, but if that doesn't make sense to the ratepayers, um, and, and makes sense financially, this is, you know, it's probably not going to be the best solution. So we want to take that all into consideration, do some short and long-term financial planning, look at how uh, rates and costs might change under each one of these different organizational assessments, under each one of these different options. Um, so we, when we come back with our report in June, um, we have a clear indication of here are the costs and benefits of doing, you know, a, a potential alternative or even the status quo. And this is what it means for the ratepayers and the taxpayers of, of Dayton, um, which is going to be incredibly important to, to understand what those impacts are. And the goal is to hopefully find some efficiencies, um, you know, going forward that is going to benefit everybody, uh, allow for the continuation of good, clean, reliable water service at the most economical, um, you know, price available for, for the ratepayers. So with that being said, um, thank you. Uh, appreciate being here and turn it over. Any questions unless, Mike, you have something else you want to bring up?
Great presentation. Thank you, gentlemen. Lenny, do you have any questions?
Yes.
I know you're ready.
I don't know if you're aware of this or not. I know Representative Hadad has advocated this in general terms, and more specifically, the town of Somerset and Taunton have reached out to us. In your study, will you be looking at the feasibility of regionalizing?
Yes.
The cost of doing it and cost lost, savings gained by doing it and not doing it?
Not just the cost, but also the, the intangible cost and benefit, right? The, the benefits of potentially regionalizing, the, the cost of potentially regionalizing from an operational standpoint or something like that. There's obviously the cost element of it, but there's, there's other benefits that, that might not be cost-related. There might be a good reason to do something.
See, North Dayton has already, receives water from Taunton. And Taunton has plenty of water. I don't know Somerset's capacity. I know Mrs. Hadad has advocated for Somerset. She's a Somerset resident. Um, I, we have met with Mayor O'Connor, and they have reached out to us. So uh, I know that option is a strong desire on Taunton's part. They're like at 76% capacity. They took on the Bridgewater Prison Complex, and they still have plenty of water to sell.
It's a good spot to be in.
Thank you. Thank you.
Nicole, do you have any questions?
No.
When do you see this starting?
Uh, I think very soon.
Yeah, probably, probably, yeah, like I think you have a draft that they might by February uh, 14th, we have to be underway.
Correct.
So yeah, like I would imagine probably within the next week and a half, week and a half.
Two weeks. Okay.
And uh, the report is due by June 30 of last year, so.
Okay, yeah, I have that.
Yeah.
So have you put any fielders out yet as far as what do the, what do departments think of this?
Not yet.
Not yet. Not yet.
Mr. Perry has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Robert Perry, 1531 Stansfield Drive. Um, I happened to see this issue when uh, my wife and I were coming in. Um, the word regionalization was used, and I would hope that um, as part of this report, uh, both the pluses and minuses that could be involved with reason, regionalization be considered. The reason I say that, a number of years ago, there were several communities within the, and I don't know what it's called now, but the Boston, et cetera, uh, Water District that encompasses any number of towns. Several of the towns were uh, surprised to discover that they had an excess of water, which the regionalization, uh, I think it was the AWWA. And again, I'm, I'm just starting this now. I'm just thinking about it now. They suddenly discovered that their water could be taken. Not sold, but taken from them for the rest of the community. And I would hope uh, that when this regionalization is studied, both the positive and the negative aspects of regionalization are considered. And I don't say that to, you know, cast uh, water, if you will, on this effort. But we need, we need to look at that, uh, and we need to consider it whether we want to remain as a sovereign entity or we want to become part of a regionalization effort. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you. It's, hi Nancy.
Do I get two minutes for?
Yeah, you got, you got two minutes left.
I will, I will give the delay from Dayton two minutes on my time.
What do they do in the Senate, like yield something?
Yeah, yielding two minutes of my time.
I think you got seven minutes total, Nancy.
Okay. Um, I'm glad to hear that this is being looked at. We have talked about in the town, doing away with districts.
Right.
And the reason why we haven't done away with districts, uh, especially the water district and bringing it in as a town department, is the bonded indebtedness. We all know that uh, there is uh, is going to have to be done, uh, work done at the, the plant uh, because as the town grows, they only have a certain capacity for processing. We can have all the water in the world. If you can't process it, you can't distribute it. So I'm glad to hear that, that that's happening. Is the cost for your study done by the, being paid by the district?
Uh, it's grant-funded.
It's grant-funded, that's even better. Um, regionalization's not new. The reason why the Somerset Reservoir was built was there was a plan for regionalization with Dayton, Somerset, and Swansea. I don't know why it fell through, um, but in the meantime, there was also talk about some kind of connection under the river, and I don't know if that really happened between Fall River and Somerset, because needless to say, Fall River's got the north pond and, and Copacoot. And a number of, uh, Fall River has done an exceptional job of acquiring property with fresh water on it. If, if you look at their boundaries, it's down around Tiverton. It goes down, then there's a little zig around a pond. And that, that little pond's in Fall River. So I think that's very important. When I hear words like consolidation or something, I don't really understand if that means, if it were just the town and the district, if that means bringing that, uh, eliminating the district and bringing it in as a town department. Uh, again, I think the major concern of voters would be bonded indebtedness for people who do not receive services. But again, I think the concept is good. I think it's worth looking at, and it's really going to depend on um, what additional benefits the residents of the town of Dayton will get who are in the district and who aren't in the district. Uh, a number of years ago, when there was an attempt to expand the district to collect additional taxes without providing services, that turned into a real mess. And um, they had to pull back, and they had to define the district. So that's behind us. I hope this is going to be positive, and I hope what comes out of it is beneficial, again, to those served and those who may be able to get town water. It would be good if we had uh, pressurized water throughout the town if for nothing else but firefighting. So uh, I'm looking forward to see how this is going to go. Thank you.
Yeah, so am I. Thank you. Does anybody else want to come up? You heard, yeah. Okay. Um, Nicole, did you have any comments? Did everybody answer?
No, I don't have any, thank you.
Lenny, also? Yes, okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, I agree.
You too, thank you. Thank you for your time.
I know, thank you, gentlemen. Like, would the board be able to entertain a vote to approve the scope?
Yes. Um, is there a motion on the floor?
It, now, Woodward and Curran, they've already been hired, correct? Or do we have to approve that as well?
Uh, they have, they have, uh, they have already been engaged as one of the town's engineering consultants.
Okay. So I would like to make a motion that the town enter into an agreement with the Dayton Water District and Woodward and Curran to conduct a regional and efficiency study.
I'll second that.
Um, and is, the cost is covered, gra- correct?
Yes, oh, absolutely, yes.
Um, so we have a?
Fund of the Commonwealth, just to be clear, we don't have any ownership in terms of responsibility.
Right, okay. Uh, this motion made and seconded, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Carron is an aye. Again, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
You have to stay, though. Um, announcements?
Um, the town parking ban, no person shall park a motor vehicle between the hours of 12:00 midnight to 6:00 AM on any street from November 1st of each year to April 1st of the following year. Please take notice. The Town of Dayton Food Bank will be held next on February 17th, 2024, located at the Town Hall, 979 Somerset Ave. It's in the lower level.
Thank you. Mr. Mull?
Yes, um, I just actually, I just actually have two quick things. Um, we have been working, we've been working with the Town Hall railing and walkway contractor. Um, uh, we ex- we, uh, we expect to have a mobilization date confirmed sometime in the next few days. Um, and uh, uh, yeah, like, uh, yeah, uh, uh, when we have that day, probably, uh, yeah, like probably around, I would expect, uh, the first part of March. Uh, like we, uh, like we, uh, like we will, uh, we will share, uh, we will share with the board, our employees and the public. Um, uh, yeah, like once we do have the project underway, it'll take about a month. So yeah, like we will, uh, uh, we will, we will some of the, so we will have disruption around the Town Hall entrance that we need to plan for.
Okay.
And uh, yeah, like, uh, yeah, I can have a contingency for as well. So we'll update everyone on that.
Yeah.
Um, like I also, uh, uh, yeah, like, uh, yeah, like I'm also very happy to share, also very happy to share that uh, that Highway Superintendent Ferry, uh, can I have in work, um, have been working to continue moving, um, have been working to continue moving the Pleasant Street Bridge project forward. Like actually, um, like actually at the end, at the end, at the end of December, we were successful, uh, like in, oh yeah, oh yeah, like, oh, like in working with our, uh, with, uh, 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 we were successful in working with beta engineers to actually have the Commonwealth take the project over. Um, so yeah, like we will be uh, responsible for doing the design and engineering and permitting, but the cost of construction, uh, yeah, like will be, uh, 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 will be borne by the Commonwealth, which is really good because as we know. So yeah, like our pricing, uh, like we have, uh, yeah, we have in place almost like, uh, we, uh, we have in place almost a $3 million grant, uh, like from the federal government, but with inflation and everything else, uh, costs are increasing by the day. So, so s- 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 so to, to have an idea, like at this point, that if there are any increases that they, that yeah, uh, that those increases will be borne by the state and not the town.
Okay.
Is extremely helpful, extremely helpful, like, uh, like it decreases my anxiety. And it produces a bridge at the end of the day that actually, um, uh, uh, yeah, I can invest, like an upgrade in the 1914 bridge.
Yeah.
Uh, we have now, so, um.
What kind of money are we talking about upfront?
Um, so like we have, uh, um, s- s- so, so it's about, oh, oh, yeah, like it's about like a, oh, like it's about like a half a million dollars that's already been approved and up, uh, yeah, like an up fronted by the town.
Yeah.
So yeah, like, I mean, and, oh, yeah, like, oh, like, oh, like it is an example of me, it, like it is an example, like where we actually are diligent about making that upfront, uh, or like investment. Um, so yeah, like, uh, uh, like, uh, yeah, like it just actually creates projects, like in grant opportunities that, that become way more appealing for us, um, as well. So it's, yeah, like I am, uh, yeah, like I'm very happy about that because, yeah, the risk that we had in terms of, huh, oh, yeah, like, huh, oh, yeah, like, uh, having to anticipate, uh, 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 like, oh, yeah, like increase of capital funds that we really don't have.
Yeah.
Um, uh, uh, yeah, like, uh, yeah, oh, yeah, like it causes anxiety, which I'm happy to not have to worry about right now.
Well, that's good news for you. Thank you.
Uh, that's all I have this evening, Mr. Chairman, members.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, selectmen's reports. Nicole, do you have anything for us tonight?
Um, the Agricultural Commission met, um, but they did not have a quorum. Um, they did let me know that they're looking for one or two new members to join. So if anyone has any interest in that, please apply. Um, and then Trails, let me look at my notes on Trails. So Trails is working on um, an elevated boardwalk, um, which will connect the west entrance of Broad Cove, um, North Nature Trail to the North Loop. Um, so they're going through that process. Um, they send me a lot of emails. I can't keep up with everything they're doing because they're so on top of it. I did see one about CPC, so I don't know if they're going, trying to get funding through that. Um, but that's all I have.
Okay, what's an elevated?
I believe, the way they describe it, I think there's like marshland over there. Do you know, Mike?
Yeah, yes.
So it has to be like?
So it's just planks to walk on?
Yes.
Pretty much sidewalk?
Yeah, I've never gone into that area. So when they describe it to me, it's very abstract, but it sounds like it's because it's like a wet area.
The wetlands, not wetlands, but it's wet.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, I, we haven't met as a um, solid waste committee. We were supposed to have a meeting yesterday or Monday, but it didn't work out. And the historical committee hasn't met, so I have nothing besides those two. Uh, open space, um, doesn't meet until the 1st of uh, February. Uh, so Lenny, do you have anything?
I got quite a bit.
Okay. Floor's all yours.
Regarding Conservation Committee, um, that was the night that we had the MMA conference the, the first evening. So I wasn't able to attend, but something really significant took place. Um, it's a huge benefit to the town and for conservation lovers. Uh, George and Stella Selhany beque- donated 10.7 acres to the Conservation Commission to be used, uh, as conservation of, so we'll say, open space or land for Bambi and Thumpa. Um, prior, the value of that is $10,800. So a lot of it is wetland, but it will be good conservation land, good open space, and help to for Dayton to keep its rural climate, uh, rural environment. Um, DDIC, the work of this committee is incredible. Um, I have before me an implementation table, which we talked about at the Monday night meeting, um, in regards to review of zoning amendments. They have prioritized them. They, in working with Serp, have also placed uh, certain boards as responsible parties for review, discussion. for review, discussion, and, and any changes that they may request. I'll give you an example. A complete and thorough review and comprehensive update of zoning bylaw to address formatting, land use, dimensional regulations, parking requirements, and supplemental developmental regulations. Responsible party, ZPA, Planning Board, uh, high priority. Um, special thanks should go to Dan Higgins, the chairman of DDIC, who has made this a labor of love. And I might add, in the city of Taunton, they have two planners on their payroll for the sum of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. We have a committee of all volunteers that produce documents that are incredible. Working with Serp, this is just one of the items that I don't know if all of either one of you have these. So I'm gonna, I've got some notes on it, but if we could get a clean copy from Dan, it'd be very important. This is roadmap to the future. Second item, we've had much discussion about home businesses in the town. And the DDIC has reviewed the home business bylaw that currently exists and has made recommendations, um, for upgrades, changes, deletions. And, um, once again, Mr. Higgins led the charge on this. They will now take this document to the Planning Board for their review. So they've been very busy and working extremely hard.
What kind of recommendations have they come up with?
I'll give you a couple of examples, many pages. Uh, there shall be no offensive noise, and at the meeting, we had a discussion about defining what offensive noise is. And they're going to reach out to Mr. Agia. In Taunton, offensive noise, um, is two things, one, time. And we already have a bylaw to deal with that, seven AM, seven PM, within the work type. But in Taunton, they have a decibel level, which I don't believe we do.
I think, I think it's a state thing, the decibel.
Yes.
Um, I could be wrong, but I know that I've, in other towns, they've had to have people come out and take it, like, measure it for, so I thought it was across the board. I don't know the number, though.
Okay, no, I don't either. Uh, another example is all heavy equipment, tractor trailers, semi-trails, or construction equipment must be either garaged or screened with plantings or fencing to at least the height of the equipment. One commercial vehicle, which is not heavy equipment and which is not more than two tons in rated capacity, may be parked outdoor, outdoors on the property. Again, I'll, I'll see that you get copies of that. Uh, the school department, they began discussion with, um, Superintendent Rooney about his evaluation and his goals. They also talked about their financial state at this time. Like many communities across the Commonwealth, out-of-district tuition is having a negative impact as it has for the town side. That would be tuition as well as out-of-district transportation, which we're well aware of that. Uh, and these, I might add, are mandates from the state. Um, and right now, they are funded, but there is a shortfall at the state level. Um, the budget manager did say that overall, the ship is sailing well. They do have available funds to do a line item transfer to cover out-of-district tuition and transportation through the fiscal year. Um, but they, like most communities, are lamenting about these mandates from the state with lack of enough, enough funding. Um, and the last thing on the school department was Dayton Middle School received an award from the Feinstein Foundation, this is the second year in a row, for academic excellence for the sum of forty-five hundred dollars to be used for instructional purposes at the school. Um, academically, DMS, Dayton Elementary are doing extremely well. The last has to do with the MMA Conference. Um, there were a lot of interesting points brought up. Um, one of the things that it impacts Dayton is that the state will be working closely with cities and towns to enforce the double pole law that exists at the state level. And they will be putting the heat on utilities to remove double poles. Um, and they are saying they shouldn't be there beyond ninety days.
So no longer allowing them just to cut the bottom foot off and say it's removed?
Right, it is a safety issue. Um, one of the things that the MMA is po- is proposing and has has received favorable report, um, from the AG's office is, and we gotta watch this closely, I asked Mr. Mullen to look into it, to see where it's at. Currently, transferring of funds out of capital stabilization requires a two-thirds vote. They are advocating, and I don't know where it's at at the legislative level. In other words, I don't know if it's already been approved or not, that it be majority vote. Because it's considered a special account, not the general stabilization account, but capital stabilization account, because their argument is the term capital is a special designated fund for specific capital projects. And that's something that could impact town meeting, so if you could just check on the clarification. Um, Senator Warren and, um, Markey, I don't know how they pulled it off. Congress allocated eleven billion dollars for water infrastructure. Of that eleven billion dollars, one billion is coming to Massachusetts.
For the Cape or for everybody?
Well, a lot for the Cape. Um, for bridges, Sagamore and Bourne. But the big issue, and it's going to affect Dayton for the two, between two to three million dollars, is PFAS and PFAS remediation. And Bondstable loan has a billion dollars in costs, so obviously, we only have a billion for the whole state. We have a couple of bridges to deal with. I'm sure they're not gonna get a billion. But it is going to be used for PFAS remediation, some bridges, road repair, but water infrastructure. Also, a priority, um, is Chapter Ninety, an increase of forty, a four hundred million dollars, Chapter Ninety. And they wanted to emphasize that cities and towns will be seeing an increase in their Chapter Ninety allotments coming down, so that's important, especially the Main Street project. Um, the one area that was disappointing, and I called them out on it. I publicly spoke on the matter. There was no increase in funding for mental health, nothing in regards to the areopia crisis or the, um, general mental health issues that exist in this state at the current time. Uh, that was a campaign pledge in the previous election cycle, and nothing happened. Lieutenant Jiskel on the podium promised, as did MMA, that they will address the issue. I know personally that I've been working behind the scenes, um, to deal with, uh, an increased funding for DPH group homes as well as DDS group homes. Because I know firsthand the plight that both face in finding staffing. Um, currently, people, we know those programs, employees are making what they pay people at Dunkin' Donuts. And I know firsthand, our responsibilities are huge. We're asked to do more and more medically, um, as well as supporting behaviors and physical challenges. And because of the lack of funding, there is a real shortage of help, critical shortages of help. Thank you.
I just wanted to speak on your mental health. Um, today, when the governor gave her budget and there was later a stakeholder meeting, um, they mentioned that some of the budget is going to increase beds for people that need to be admitted for mental health, but like you just said, there are no staff, so we can have as many beds as we want if we have nobody to care for these people. Um, as well as, um, I don't know if anyone else heard this, the opioid funds that we've received, um, they're now opening up what you can do with them, and one of the things is, of course, housing. Um, so this money was, it should be used for the crisis. It shouldn't be then allocated elsewhere to make up for another crisis. Um, so that is very disappointing to hear.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lenny.
Thank you.
Hold thorough. Uh, there's no old business, so we're gonna move on to new business. Review, discuss, and act approval of the updated Dayton-Rohoboth Regional School District Agreement as approved by the town meeting.
Yes, yes, uh, yeah, like, in ev- like, in everyone, uh, will, like, remember, there were, like, two small changes proposed at the June twenty twenty-three town meeting, um, that were approved by both the Town of Rohoboth and the Town of Dayton. So, um, so we do have an agreement ready for execution at this point. Um, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, 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 the Town of Rohoboth met earlier this week. Uh, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like, and they have approved it and executed, and now it's our turn.
Okay.
And I just, uh, yeah, like, just, uh, really to remind everyone the changes. Um, I actually, there was like, uh, uh, there were, uh, uh, there were updates, uh, 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 there were updates to the, uh, 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 there were updates to the addresses of the Rohoboth schools. Uh, like, and then, actually, um, and then, actually, like, in section, uh, yeah, like, uh, yeah, like, in section, uh, like, in section ten of the agreement, um, uh, yeah, like, we, uh, uh, yeah, uh, yeah, uh, yeah, like, we, uh, yeah, like, we originally had, like, an early date for the submission of a tentative budget. Uh, like, and that has actu- uh, that has actually been updated to be March first at this point.
Right.
So those are the changes, and it, oh, uh, 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 you're like, it's all ready for approval at this point.
Great, thank you. So is there a motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the updated Dayton-Rohoboth Regional School District Agreement as approved by town meeting.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Carrigan is an aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Review, discuss, and act fiscal year two thousand twenty-five Department Budget, uh, one, Account one, one twenty-two.
Yes, so, yeah, like, we do have a proposed Department one twenty-two, uh, uh, budget for the board's review and consideration. Um, uh, uh, the, uh, the F, uh, uh, the, uh, the budget proposal, like, is fairly straightforward. Uh, like, you will act, uh, you will actually note, uh, like, a twelve, oh, yeah, like, a twelve thousand dollar increase in the communications commingle line, uh, like, which, uh, or, yeah, like, which actually allowed us to decrease the, uh, the, uh, or the communications line above by about, uh, 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 thirty-eight hundred dollars. Um, so, yeah, the, uh, the twelve, uh, the twelve, uh, the twelve thousand dollar increase also includes consolidating all, 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 all of our Comcast and AT&amp;T bills into this line from the entire town. And, um, so, yeah, like, uh, yeah, like, we're, uh, we're initial, uh, we're initially projecting that, like, an additional thirty-two, uh, like, hundred dollar decrease in other budgets, like, uh, uh, yeah, for, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, like, for the AT&amp;T costs alone here. Um, and, uh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like, in the, oh, yeah, like, in, oh, yeah, like, in the, like, communications out of the commingle line as always for the last act, 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 um, actually, five years, but really moving target. So, um, so, yeah, like, what we did, we took, uh, December twenty, so, yeah, like, we took, uh, December twenty twenty-three bills, like, it annualized it. Oh, yeah, like, it, oh, yeah, like, in the annualized of that, over like a twelve-month period, we took them up with an accurate projection. Um, so, yeah, so, yeah, like, uh, so, yeah, so, yeah, that explains the twelve, uh, uh, that explains the twelve thousand dollar increase there.
Yeah.
So, yeah, like, which was, uh, like, fairly, oh, yeah, like, it was, uh, fairly shocking if you didn't have an explanation. So I wanted to provide that, like, and any other questions, I'm happy to answer.
Uh, I think it's great, but office supplies was decreased by twenty-eight hundred, I think.
Uh, uh, decrease, uh, uh, yeah, it's actually decreased like thirteen hundred dollars, like, from the twenty-eight hundred.
Oh, oh, from twenty-eight hundred, I'm sorry, okay.
Peter, that's because we give these clips back and we've saved a lot of money.
I've noticed that, we've been all good.
Leanne is very, very particular about that, so. Still, yeah, like, I don't act, uh, like, I don't actually think we've had, like, an office, uh, 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 yeah, oh, yeah, uh, uh, yeah, oh, yeah, like, supply orderly, oh, yeah, like, other than paper. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, like, in forever, like, in my binders, uh, 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 probably help add it to our paper class, but, yeah, like, we've, we try to be very frugal and diligent, so.
Thank you. Uh, do you guys have any questions?
I just have one question. Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Percentage-wise, how much of an increase is this?
Um, hold on. Hi. It's probably when we factor in the, like, communications are commingled, like, we have two account, uh, for, uh, uh, for the funds we're gonna take out of the other funds. Oh, yeah, like, uh, oh, yeah, like, out of our other accounts, but I will do the math if you can bear with me for a second. Um, okay, hold on one second. So last year, it's eight, nine twenty-five, six plus eight thousand, that we had at town meeting. So, uh, we went from, hold on a second, minus, I wanna write this down. Uh, yeah, like, I get, uh, like, sage-fighting anxiety when I do, uh, when I have to do math on TV. So I'm just making sure I write all these numbers down. Divided by one seven six, nine twenty-five, so, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like, overall, it's about, like, a, oh, like, overall, it's about, like, an eight percent increase, uh, like, including all those technology costs. So, yeah, like, and once we back those out, it's probably, uh, yeah, like, I, oh, yeah, like, I would say around probably five percentish or so.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, like, if that makes sense.
You did all right, Mike.
Huh?
You did all right under pressure.
I know.
Thank you. Sorry.
Yeah, I wanna jinx it. The meeting isn't over yet either.
So is there a motion on the floor to, um, So is there a motion on the floor to, um, approve, well, not, I mean, is there a motion on the floor to, um, for fiscal year, fiscal year's 2025 budget?
Now, this would be line item 5,000 series?
Uh, like, actually, yeah, the whole, uh, the, uh, the whole budget account 122, the whole, oh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like that includes 5101, uh, like, oh, like, oh, like all the way down to 5730.
That's, I'm sorry, budget account number?
Uh, 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 122.
120.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, like, and this is just like very, like initial, like we'll have an opportunity to adjust and further refine as we go forward as well.
We might have to.
We don't have to, do we?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I'd like to make a motion to pres- approve, um, fiscal year 2025 department budget, item 122, as presented this evening.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Cameron is an aye. Review, discuss, and act is, uh, for the annual FP2 license renewal is gonna be tabled. If, uh, I can have a motion on the floor to table.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to table, uh, the annual FP2 license renewals as presented this evening.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter Cameron is an aye. Approval of the warrants, whenever you're ready, honey.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Town of Dyton pay the warrant for January 18th, 2024. Item 38-24, $119,870.66. Item 30B-24, $86,001.77.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter Cameron is an aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve that Dyton pay the warrant of January 25th, 2024. Item 31A-24, $137,619.8. Item 31B-24, $143,669.46.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Cameron is an aye. Boy, we can spend a lot of money, can't we? Um, any acknowledgements this evening? None? Correspondence? We have a letter of resignation from the senior clerk assessor's office. Uh, as typical as we usually do, I'm not gonna read it, but, um, the assessor, assistant assessor is retired, well, leaving. Uh, she's resigning as senior clerk. Her last day is February 3rd. So, um, when are we posting it for a new one, Mike?
Uh, we already have.
Already have?
Yes.
Okay. Any, any response yet? No?
Uh, uh, we, uh, like, we haven't yet. Uh, like, we first, oh, yeah, like, we first have an obligation, uh, oh, yeah, like, we first have an obligation to post internally.
Yeah.
So, yeah, like that is, oh, yeah, like, so that, like, is open internally.
Yeah.
To, I think, about February 1st, and then, oh, like, oh, yeah, like after that, if we do have any interest, we have an opportunity to explore that.
Okay.
So, like, and if we don't, um, so, yeah, like, and if we don't, yeah, like, we have an opportunity to post, uh, yeah, out, uh, yeah, outside after that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the letter of resignation of Lisa A. Tetra with sincere thanks and appreciation for her service to the Town of Dyton.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Cameron is an aye. Thank you, Lenny. Any public input? Okay. Uh, we need approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen regular meeting minutes of January 10th, 2024.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Cameron is an aye. Uh, we're gonna go to an executive session. Uh, under Massachusetts General Law 30A, Sections 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body in the chair, so declares, and the chair does declare. This is for the fire, fighters' union and the police union. So we need, um, a roll call on the, on the floor to go into executive session.
I will second that motion. Or, or so moved.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Cameron is an aye. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.